Thank you everybody for coming to the general meeting of the State of South Fulton. At this time, we will close the executive session. I will entertain a motion to close the executive session.
I can make a motion to close the executive session.
Second.
The property move is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, was there anything done in the executive session that needs to be announced?
No, sir. There was no action taken.
Okay. Being that, we would like to have an invocation by our chaplain followed by a pledge of belief.
Let us all stand. Let us pray. May gracious God, we thank you for your amazing grace. For it is grace that has brought us together, the grace that keeps us. We ask that you allow your divine presence and your power to fall upon our elected officials, give them the wisdom that is needed. And we thank you for all of our presence, oh God, because together we make things happen. To the least and to the greatest, this we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. May see.
Mr. Clerk, before we go any further, I'd like to acknowledge the school board representatives here. Ms. Kim Dove, young fan of the magazine. You're our school board representative. And you're a man who's always been here with the people. They're interested in the former city and getting the bill passed, former state representative of the district. I don't think I've seen any elected officials. Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have all members present today. Two of them are present via Skype. I believe Catherine Brown is joining now. So we also have present council member Willis and council member Ratt. The first item...
Also, for your best person, Mr. Clerk, they're away on city business. And we're asking to give them opportunity to participate in this meeting tonight because they're away on city business. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. The first item for consideration is approval of the consent agenda. You have several items, letters A through G.
I entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to have request the approval of the NORAD security agreement being moved to the regular agenda. Need to make one amendment.
Where are we? I don't know. G? Okay. Now, what are you asking again?
I need to move the NORAD security agreement. We need to make one slight amendment. Burdette is left off.
Okay.
Could we keep it on the agenda and add Burdette too?
Right. Just want to add it to the regular...
So I think what she's requesting is to leave it on the consent, but for us to make amendment to include Burdette?
That's not what she's asking. She said taking out the consent to put it on the regular... Either way, it comes out the same. So I'm fine with moving it to the regular agenda. Okay.
Yeah, I just need to...
You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, as long as the motion maker is accepted, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Mr. Clerk?
The next item is approval of the regular reading agenda.
I make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Yes. We're new being brought in. I need to make sure it's recorded that I'm here.
Yes, we did. We recorded you and Catherine as being here.
As a mayor, there is one adjustment, a staff adjustment. The council members have requested, I'm sorry, they're not necessarily council members. There has been a request to defer the zoning cases under A, 1 through 3. The request for modification for M-18003, request for rezoning Z-18004, and request for rezoning Z-18006, to move those to the last meeting in July.
Is this request coming from council people or is it coming from the mix of some of the other?
So I think it's a mixture. I think staff has reviewed the request. I think there is a request from some of the applicants, as well as with the coordination of some of the council activities, this request has been made.
Well, I'm a private that long as it's that mixture.
It's a mixture.
Because I don't want any applicant to say, "We didn't hear his case because we didn't have somebody here." They are here.
Well, and so they are here. And so the request is there are three cases, and one of which is an applicant, and then the others have been made by a mixture of staff and council.
I'm a little bit concerned about this.
Yes, sir. The one application, I believe that's going to be item 2, 2A. The applicant is requesting themselves to have to defer to allow for there to be a traffic say conducted for that item. But the other two items, the elected officials can speak on that, but they're requesting to have those other two items, 2, 1, and 2, 3 deferred.
Yeah. This is unusual. I mean, usually when we have something, it's a vote to defer or whatever, case may be. And I'm getting, I'm very uncomfortable.
True.
Because, are the applicants here?
Yes, they are.
The applicant, yes. The applicants are here, and I just...
You can't allow them to be heard and then allow council as a whole would like to defer. They have that option.
I think I'd be more comfortable that way.
Understood.
At least I get the applicant heard.
No, that's fine. I just didn't want to waste anybody's time if I'm going to make a motion to defer.
Absolutely. I think that's good. We just hear them.
Understood.
And we can hold action until it's a time if it's okay with you. Okay, let's, okay.
What's right before you now is a motion and a second to adopt today's regular reading agenda as amended, and the only amendment was the request from council member Jackson that moved the NORAD security contract agreement to the regular reading.
And that we were here to request for zoning, but not make a decision.
Well, when those items would be called, I'm assuming you'll let the applicant be heard, staff make a protest, etc., and then a motion, you'll entertain a motion for the referral.
And if we can, you know, staff, you know, we have plenty of time to make these agendas. And when you come ambush me like this, it makes me kind of look at you kind of funny.
Understood.
All right? So let's make sure we do that. I'd rather, really, I'd rather for the dismissal come from the people who are coming up and making the application.
Which I think item 2 is...
Okay, and I just, I took item 2 off.
Okay.
That's the way I used to it. But, you know, people drive a long way just to come through these things. Anyway, okay, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the regular reading agenda with the second amendment.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, Savannah, go ahead.
Yes. I couldn't hear. Did we approve to boot the request for the NORAD security agreement for the consent agenda, general agenda? Did that occur?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I guess the two stand aye to. Those opposed? Okay, let's move on.
Okay. The next item, Mr. Mayor, is the proclamations and recognition section. We have two proclamations for presentation today. The first item is sponsored by council member Gil Yard, a proclamation recognizing Kimarie C. Oparo. Appreciation day.
By February 2018, and you see, she's on a roll, okay? By 20, by February 2018, Kimarie's clothing line was featured on the runway of Atlantic City Fashion Week with 18 outfits. Whereas, in addition to Atlantic City Fashion Week, Kimarie and her business have acquired many positive accolades, including Kimarie being on the cover of Said Women's Magazine to watch issue in June of 2017 and featured in South Fulton Lifestyle Magazine in August of 2018. Her business was in the top 10 finalists for the hers-only junior pitch event sponsored by Tofi International in November of 2017. In June of 2018, Kimarie won the award for the most original business idea at the Florida Children's Business Fair. And whereas, she's not finished yet. And whereas, by the end of the year, Kimarie will be an author. She is working on a collaborative book, "The Science Behind It: Formulating Success at Any Age." That's the title of the book. The book is in collaborative effort with 22 other young entrepreneurs and is expected to release later this year. Kimarie is also currently developing an online course to teach other children how to speak Japanese. She also plans to develop a course to teach other children how to turn their passion into a business. Now therefore, let it be resolved that mayor and council recognizes Kimarie C. Oparo for many accomplishments and thus hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 26, 2018, as Kimarie C. Oparo Appreciation Day in the City of South Fulton. I'm going to pass the mic to the family in a minute, but what she does not know, and I haven't talked to my colleagues yet, but I would really love to have guys, Kids' Day at the city. And see if we can work something out, because there are other Kimaries out there, and this is just, this is wonderful. It really, really is. Would you like to say a few things?
Well, first of all, thank you for the proclamation. And thank you to the Austins for coming out to see me, all my family and friends. And I'm really grateful to you all, taking your time to come here and honor me. I'm...
(Japanese)
(Japanese) Oh, wait, that's wrong. It's wrong because I just had a birthday, and so I'm saying I'm nine years old even though I'm 10. (Japanese) I said, "Hi, I'm Kimarie. I'm nine years old, and I've been studying Japanese since I was 13 months old." I'm 10. Oh, yeah, I'm 10.
(Laughter)
My friend Chloe here also speaks Japanese. Oh, she does? Yes.
We all know, we speak in Japanese.
(Japanese)
I'm 11 years old, and I like to do, I like a lot of different things."
Thank you all for taking the time out to appreciate the hard work that Kimarie has been doing. We thought it would be important for Chloe to come because she helps Kimarie sometimes when we have busy days as vendors. They'll come out and be supportive, so it's just nice that the community thanks the work that she's doing. Thank you. Oh, and you can get her book at www.kimarieopar.com. Or you can see me after the meeting.
(Applause)
The proclamation is sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Baker, a proclamation recognizing Restoration Community Resources Appreciation Day.
Mr. Kevin Smith, co, please, go forward. As these gentlemen come forward, I would like to share, I'm reminded of a movie that you guys probably seen by the name Roots. These guys remind me of the great Kuntunga from Roots. When you have the great Kuntunga, they, when Kunta was taken away from the village for manhood training, the great Kuntunga had, he was a guy who was over the manhood training. And as he was over the manhood training, he used to tell the young man that they left the villages as boys, but they returned as men, and they would have to complete a certain amount of training. And if they didn't complete that training, they would have to actually return to their village, and they would never be viewed again as men. They would be viewed eternally as boys, because absent that training, they would be viewed as weak and a detriment to their society. They would never be allowed to marry. They would never be allowed to give birth because of that detriment. So when I met Kevin Smith a while ago, a little bit over a year, I was working with several young men in programs where there's a lot of kids who were in need of extra attention. And we sat down and we spoke. And he had a program that was helping our young men to go faster and further, whereas we were both trying to do the same thing, you know, in helping our young men. I was really, really impressed with what he was doing. He invited me out last year to award ceremony where his program had been doing this for some time. We've attended the last one about, not even a full month ago, along with councilwoman Jackson and Councilman Cleve. But this proclamation is well deserved. Whereas Restoration Community Resources, a nonprofit organization, was established in 2004, began as a program developed by Minister Kevin Smith to successfully impact the lives of young men through mentorship with an emphasis on education and exposure to entrepreneurial endeavors. It is also the desire of Restoration Community Resources to assist young men with recognizing and fulfilling their life's purpose. Whereas the mentorship of Restoration Community Resources offers a unique learning opportunity and plays a vital role in shaping young men to become entrepreneurs with the hope that they will become leaders to their families and their community. Whereas the young entrepreneurs of Restoration Community Resources established their own corporation called The Men of Valor Enterprises, also known as MOOD, and it was incorporated in the state of Georgia in 2010. MOOD is a manufacturer of t-shirts, wristbands, and other products. Whereas services provided by Restoration Community Resources are community-supported. These services range from speaking and excellence seminars, college preparation, financial investment education, mentor training and development, as well as personal and professional grooming. And whereas Restoration Community Resources has awarded 37 scholarships to graduating high school seniors in excess of $25,000 from 2007 to 2018. Now therefore, it is resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of South Fulton do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 26, 2018, as Restoration Community Resources Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton, Georgia.
I'd like to thank mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilman Baker, rest of the honorable council personnel, giving out of the guide. Really, this is just a part of all these young, all these young men up here. I get an opportunity to work with these amazing men on a regular basis. It's not just when we come together for meetings, but this is what we do, who we are. We're very honored to be in the new city, South Fulton. And it's just an honor to be here. Of course, giving glory and God, all we do glorify him. Thank you for this wonderful proclamation. All right?
(Applause)
In a few words. All right? Good. Turn to the side.
At this time, I'm allowed, councilwoman Cleve, to take upon a personal figure. Just want to recognize two beautiful, brilliant women in our city who are celebrating birthdays. Our interim director of community development, Michelle Levine. And also the brilliant, currently a goddess. And we have the next one.
Okay. I'll let him do birthdays. I quit your birthdays. Okay, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you're now the public comment portion of today's meeting. We have three speaker parties, so if those three speakers would please approach the podium at this time, Mr. Andre M. Dancy, Miss Linda Collins, and Miss Divine Morris Frank.
Good evening. I'm Andre Dancy. I'm representing Sable Land homeowners association. I'm the president. And some of the issues that I had tonight to bring forward to the council and the mayor is with law enforcement. But fortunately, divine intervention always happens. I ran into Chief Rogers. We had a sidebar, and I like the responses that I received from her, so I can move forward with some of my concerns. I also want to recognize my councilperson, city councilwoman Rosie Jackson, because she has reached out to our community, and when we had our annual meeting, she attended, and she gave a presentation to the homeowners. But one other thing I do want to just mention, and that is the youth in our area. I know there is a curfew, but we always, always see youth after midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning, and that is an issue because they are breaking an ordinance that's in Fulton County. So I would like that to be addressed. But right now, I am satisfied with the chief response, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have been encouraged, we have been encouraged to attend the zoning meetings, and there was a problem that was created this month at a zoning meeting where people went in, signed up, and they were asked to leave. And there were other people that were there, and they were not allowed in. When we are encouraged to do these things, and we try to accommodate the city so that we can be involved and informed, then this creates a problem, because at the zoning, when we go to attend, this is where everything is involved, and we should be there to listen and become involved to help us make sound decisions on what is moving into the city. So I feel like there should be some accommodations to this, and when this does, when the zoning meetings are held, the doors should be open so that we be able to attend. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Levon Morris Grant, and I am the Executive Director of McCosh Healing Network, and we serve victims of domestic violence in the seven cities of South Fulton. And we're coming forward because we are seeking, and we are ready to see some grants from CJCC, which is the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, for victims of domestic violence. And we're looking, because we need to get more statistical information about what's going on in South Fulton. They know what's going on in North Fulton, in Atlanta, but there's hardly any statistical information on what's happening in the South Fulton area around domestic violence, because our resources are very limited on this side of town. And our organization is looking to secure those numbers by working with prosecutors, the judges, whatever we are creating here in the new city and the other surrounding cities in the area, because we need to find out if our victims need housing, utility assistance, and those are the kind of grants that CJCC is awarding to different organizations, mine as being one. And we want to be able to secure more grants to bring more services and resources to this side of Fulton County. So I'm asking if you all can refer our organization to victims of domestic violence, and use us as a resource, and to let them know that if we don't have that resource, we can do referrals for temporary protection orders. We just got a woman housed that was living in the park escaping domestic violence. We just got her into permanent housing here in the Fulton, South Fulton County area on a limited amount of resources, but we just kept calling. So we're asking if you will utilize us and help us secure those numbers and those statistics to put into our grants, so that we can secure more funding and build our nonprofit and allow our city and families to be more secure. Thank you.
Okay, yes, we have our card.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor Edwards, may I have the floor?
Go ahead.
Mayor Edwards, I wanted to reply about the curfew. Could you please inform a resident that came to the public comment that City of South Fulton does have a curfew, and he sees a minor out past curfew. He just needs to call the police, it just needs to be enforced. And as far as the concept for domestic violence, could you please let that resident know that the solicitor's office has a domestic violence program, and she may need to reach out to Kenji Johnson, because she can probably get a lot of that information through the solicitor's office.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. Councilwoman, Mr. Clerk.
Next item on the agenda is under number eight, business letter A. This is the zoning, rezoning modifications and variants portion of today's agenda with public hearings. The first item is a request for modification, M-18-003, within District Seven. Staff?
Praise the Mayor and Council. The item before you is M-18-003, which is a modification request with existing, which is existing case. That's my second amendment.
Is that an issue with the case?
Yes.
Why are you doing it? Do you want to say something?
Yes, sir, this is one of the items that I wanted to request to be deferred, if it's okay.
Well, we said, we would hear it, but we would take it in action. You know what I'm saying, rather than it be deferred, we just hear it, but we're going to take it in action.
Because I just think that to hear it today, knowing it's going to be deferred, I just like to make a motion prior to it being heard, because it would actually alleviate them going through it, and they would have to come back anyway to present it if it is deferred, even if it's not actually.
The board is accepting the agenda. The board accepted it with the fact that they would hear it, and they would not make a decision. That was the motion without acceptance. I think it'll work out in your favor. Go ahead.
Okay, so the applicant, which is Rockland Homes Incorporated, are they requesting to modify case number Z-02-124? The purpose of this is to complete a previously developed or semi-developed subdivision in Council District Seven. The current property is known for mixed use, which I identified in a zoning case with Z-02-124. The surrounding properties are also zoned within the City of South Fulton as mixed use or apartments. And we're identifying the adjacent properties that are within the city limits of Fairburn, which are commercial or industrial. So a little bit of the case history, the case of Z-02-124. What they're requesting tonight is very similar to their first original case of Z-02-124. So just to kind of give you a little bit of history, back in 2010, they decided to request to have this property have a modification at that time in 2010, to change the town home count from twenty-six to twenty, single-family homes. And then in 2011, to replace the two-hundred-and-seven townhomes to three-hundred-and-two multifamily units. And just so that you know, multifamily units are apartments. Twenty-eighteen proposal reverted back to the original plan of Z-02, which you'll see in your packet, that it went back to the original twenty family lots, going back to twenty-six, and three-hundred-and-two multifamily apartments, going back to two-hundred-and-seven townhomes. So, as you're seeing on the drawing, the properties identified in the yellow area is where they're asking to remove the seventeen single-family homes and replacing them with twenty-four townhomes. And in the green, they're asking to remove the three single-family homes and replacing those with townhomes. And then in the blue, you're seeing where they're asking to remove the three-hundred-and-two multifamily, which are apartments, to two-hundred-and-seven townhomes. And just so that you know, the current structures that are already out there are all townhomes. So, the existing conditions, so the first three are conditions that they're requesting to have changed. So you'll see that the existing conditions allow for nine-hundred-and-eighty townhomes with twenty single-family lots. They're asking for eleven-hundred-and-twenty-five townhomes with no single-family dwellings. So it'd be a complex for full townhomes. They're asking to have the three-hundred-and-two multifamily apartments removed, to have no apartments at all. The current conditions allow for them to be between six-hundred, eight-hundred, nine-hundred, and eleven-hundred, twelve feet. They're asking to make it a very cross-the-board minimum square footage of eleven-hundred. And then the remaining three are all basically changed because the first three were conditions that were identified. I want to bring something to your attention on two A. The original plan says it should be non-conceptual. Staff is recommending that we allow for that to be conceptual, based on the fact that they're still looking for tenants, and that could be something that changes. But as long as they stay very close to the site plan, staff is asking for it to still remain to be conceptual. So the comprehensive plan identifies this as suburban two neighborhoods, a very high residential density. As mentioned before, they're having multifamily out there currently now on their proposal, or it will be mixed, excuse me, mixed use on some parts, and then single-family office and commercial on other parts. So the comprehensive plan supports this. It does welcome higher residential density, and it does allow for townhomes, as well as it aligns with the comprehensive plan. So this comprehensive plan does support this development. This is the main entrance, which is along Oakley Industrial Boulevard. And this is what's existing out there now, townhomes. You'll see that the area that's denoted on the photo, which will be where townhomes will be replaced instead of single-family homes. On this photo, you'll see where the townhomes will replace the apartments. So there aren't any apartments there now, but they're asking to have townhomes instead. This is the entrance along Spence Road, and staff is recommending approval of this item.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir, he is.
Pete, I would just want to ask you, are you already to defer it? Because I don't want to lose your right to public hearing. Pete? It's one of you already confirmed, so we don't want to lose your right for public hearing.
Well, we've got a contractual constraint on the property that is a problem for us. And really, we're hopeful that we can be able to move forward this evening. It's a reduction of a hundred and six units, it's a reduction in density, it gets rid of the multifamily apartment component, and we would respectfully request the ability with whatever budget staff should put on us to be able to move forward.
But council has voted on the fact that we're just going to hear it tonight. I just don't, I just don't want to lose your right to public hearing by having, by going any further with the conversation, so.
Where did we borrow that?
Yes, we did.
I thought you just told us we had, we recommended it. We're calling it only.
Hold up. What was the, what was the motion, what was the action on that, Mr. Clerk?
Ultimately, you just agreed to have the items heard and not deferred during the adoption of the agenda, but that you would, but that you would entertain the deferral once those items came up.
Yeah, because most of us.
If I didn't make a motion to defer, then yeah.
Well, we asked to remove it off of the agenda, and we recommended it, and we hear it.
Okay, Savannah, I can't see your hand, but hold on a minute. So absent a motion, absent a motion that we didn't have to defer, we could go forth with the deal.
Yes, you can, Mr. I would defer to the Attorney.
Well, first of all, let me, because the Baker has an objection, and I want to hear what he has to say.
Well, it's been brought to my attention, given this former meetings in reference to this, there was a representative there who neglected to answer several questions, and they deferred it to the developer. And from my understanding, the developer has yet to give them answers. And these are residents whom I represent. Given that they have yet to have their answers, I don't want to hast to a judgment for approval, given that they have received their answers.
So, matter of attorney, does the Baker have the right to make a motion to defer?
Yes, he has the right to make a motion to defer, and I would still give the applicant, if they request the opportunity, to provide feedback.
And without losing any public hearing at the next time?
Excuse me, Mayor.
You won't lose any public hearing at our next board meeting?
Yeah, unless the applicant would agree to just provide information at the next meeting. So the applicant could have opportunity to provide the information that they planned tonight, or they can agree to defer that information for the next meeting.
That would be fine, but what would really be helpful in the efforts of moving along is if we could know what those issues and questions are. I did my full public participation report, and I responded, I thought, to each and every one of the issues that were raised when we had the CZIM, as well as our own independent public hearing. So if there are some issues hanging out there, we would love to know what they are.
Right, were you at all of the meetings?
Yes.
Okay, well, during the interim, I'll make sure that I direct them to you, and then we can come back, and that way I've given my community a time, you know, at least due diligence to allow their questions to be answered, you know, to their satisfaction, and they can make their decisions.
So, State Attorney, at this point, I can't entertain a motion.
I, correct, you have, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Second?
The property moved to second, in a discussion? All those in favor?
Why?
What are they saying, Savannah, ah? All right, that's unanimous, I think. Okay, it's deferred to what, what's the next meeting?
The second meeting in July.
Second meeting in July?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and you will get with him? All right. Next, Ms. Clerk?
No.
The next item is Roman number two, request for rezoning, Z-18-004, within District One.
Staff?
I'm sorry, sir.
What's that, what's that, what's that?
I guess there's something else, you have to do a point.
So this is a little different than the last request. The applicant is actually requesting to have this item deferred. The residents have asked that they conduct a traffic study, and the applicant is in agreement to that. So they're asking for a deferral.
I'm going to make a motion to defer.
I'm making a motion to defer.
The property moved to second, in a first discussion? Anything for Savannah?
Ah, hi.
Let's vote, we got two eyes already. I doubt you have a sister, clerk.
Thank you. Roman number three is a request for rezoning, Z-8-006, within District Four. Staff?
Praise the Mayor and Council. The applicant of Forest Creek Renaissance LLC is requesting to rezon property from single-family R3 to single-family R5A. This property lies in Council District Four. The property is located along Jones Road, and can't see it, but it's basically, you're seeing it's surrounded by residential zoning here. There is a boldish green color there that's mixed use. Those are our zones within the South Fulton zoning, and then here you're seeing the City of Union City, which has a very similar zoning adjacent to the property, which is residential and mixed use. Okay, the comprehensive plan identifies this property as regional live-work, as well as South Fulton transitional. The properties are nearby the schools of Renaissance Elementary, Renaissance Middle, and, excuse me, Langston Hughes High. The current neighborhood entrance is abandoned along Jones Road. As you're seeing here, it's also showing the sign that advertises tonight's meeting. You're seeing here the unpaid road along Jones Road. Should this development take place, of course, they will be required to pave the road and add sidewalks. Here's an elevation of the proposed housing for that subdivision. This is a current site plan showing you the property and how they're proposing to develop the property. So just to give you a little bit of history about this property, it's important that I note that this is a rezoning, but the property is still currently zoned, which means if they are not allowed to do what they're asking, then they're still allowed to move forward with the R3 zoning. So they currently have R3, which was rezoned in Z-02. They were allowed to have fourteen hundred square feet, and twenty-one percent of that will be green space required, which is in the common area. They were not required to have an amenity area. Two thousand eighteen, today, they're asking to have a larger home. It's important to also note that the R5A zoning only allows for eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So they're asking for a much larger home than what they're required to have. They're also asking to have twenty-five percent green space, which is larger green space. They were not required to have an amenity area, but they're stating they will have an amenity area. Okay, so the case, just so that you know, the property is surrounded by majority residential. They have enlarged homes, more green space, and added amenities. It's adjacent to three schools, which allows for more accessibility to walking and biking. The proposed density does align with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval with the listed conditions, very similar to what I mentioned before, ninety-five total. 95 total homes, 18 middle square foot, feet, excuse me, tying into a site plan on March 27, 2018, with an amenity area with 100 feet of a green belt along Jones Road. Excuse me, Jones Road and 50 feet along the remainder of the perimeter. And we're gonna add 25% of the common area for green space. They're gonna add two lanes along Jones Road, excuse me, I keep saying Jones Road, sorry. Two lanes along Jones Road and sidewalks that allow for connectivity to the schools. And it's an off, sorry?
No, I'm lacking it.
Oh, okay. And then adding a right-turn lane deceleration, excuse me, deceleration into the main entrance. At the May 15 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval based on staff's recommendation. That concludes my report, sir.
Is the applicant in?
Yes, he is, sir.
Applicant in. Do you approve of this deferment until next meeting?
If there's a dissimilar discussion that needs to happen with the community, that's fine, yes, ma'am.
Yes, you know?
I would like to defer it to give you the opportunity to meet with especially the homeowner that is immediately next to, that would be immediately next to this subdivision that happens to be a 20-acre farm. And so on that, on that street, you have zoning that's R2, R3, agricultural, C P, mixed. You've got everything. You've got City Grove, Oakley Bay, you've got South Fulton, Oakley Bay. So I would just encourage you to meet with the homeowner that is immediately next door and with the City Grove Community Association. And together, you know, just really talk it out and work it out.
Yes, ma'am, I did, so I did have two meetings and I did meet with the neighbor there. I proposed some conditions and at the second meeting, didn't get any response from that. And I've asked for another meeting because somebody said there was some unfinished business. And I have not heard back from them, but I'll be glad to ask for another meeting.
Okay, I would have made that one.
No, I'd like to make a motion that is seven minutes to defer.
Second. Property moved to second, in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Savannah, you in favor?
Okay, I am.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, is she unanimous?
Aye.
Okay, is she unanimous, all right?
Sir, ma'am, I need to note that for July 24th, we will have five items now.
That's okay, that's why we meet.
All right.
What was that?
Two council members who need to take a bite.
Next, Miss Clerk?
The next item is for agreements, letter B, request approval of animal control IGA. That's Agreement 2018 dash 09.
I'm gonna take a motion. Hearing none, comment?
I make a motion to approve Agreement 2018 dash 19 to approve the animal control IGA.
Second.
Property moved to second, discussion, Ms. Gilliard.
Okay, give me a second. Just give me one second. I have a question. I don't, I know that our current question is 987,804 dollars, right?
Gilliard, make sure you.
And then includes the county's indirect costs. So on the form that we receive, it's $3 million. And it says we have the largest number of responses next to Atlanta. And that 987 has come down to 857,450. So I don't know if that amount is exclusive of the indirect costs. And I also don't know what we're voting on. I don't know if we're still voting on what we thought, young. Can tell you we do a contract at the same cost? Or is there a different cost? Or I don't know what we do.
Yes, ma'am.
So the contract is for the 800, uh, we approximately 50,000 that we discussed in the last council meeting. It is inclusive of all related costs, including the county's indirect cost. And I think the caveat, which is probably most important to council, is that this IGA can be terminated by either side at any time. And so it allows us to, if we decided to potentially bring animal control in-house, as I told you, we are looking into through the FY19 budget process, it would allow us to still do that. So since it wouldn't interrupt that, my recommendation is to move forward to have no interruption of services with the knowledge that staff will continue to evaluate the, the animal control services.
And the amount would therefore stay 857,000.
It would go down to eight, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, third, eighth, uh, previous question.
I don't think we had any more discussion, uh, Miss Willis, we can go right into, to the motion. Is it all right, you withdraw that?
I will.
I will.
If nobody has had any discussion, then I'll, I'll recite my, I'll recite my motion.
That's what we, that's what I'm coming with. Okay, so, uh, there's a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Miss Clerk?
The next item.
The next item is under ordinances, letter C. Roman number one for second reading is ordinance 2018 dash 027, an ordinance establishing the compensation structure for the chief judge of the municipal court, the compensation structure for additional judges for the municipal court and for other lawful purposes.
Colleagues, we've had a lot of discussion about this. I would ask the clerk to read, uh, what we talked about in there in terms of a motion.
I'm gonna take notes again, uh, Ms. Rowell probably had it ready.
Yes. I make a motion to amend, um, section 7 dash 1, 0, 02 dash 8 judges to read as follows. Compensation for the chief judge shall be fixed as follows. The first-time chief judge shall be compensated 135,000 for four days, Monday through Thursday. It would amend section B to eliminate the word chief judge and say the pro temp judges shall also be compensated for Friday and Saturday and as needed. And the remainder of that section would stay the same. And we would delete section C and item number two.
Second.
Property moved to second discussion. Hearing none?
Uh, there was something else, another recommendation that was made, can we hear that second one?
That second had to do with, uh.
Temporary.
Temporary. You want to, Judge, you want to come in?
I just wanted to give both, you know, before we voted.
You want to hear the second option of it, temporary.
Certainly. And so there were two options. The first one was the fifth train. The second one was under the initial schedule that was presented to the, presented to the body in the initial ordinance, where there was a retainer, there was, and then there was per session costs. I proposed that I would, based on your comments, based on your request for me, that I would do 10 first appearance sessions and 15 monthly other sessions that will include plan arraignment, FTA, code, bench trial counters. That I would do 15 of those monthly, 10 of the plan arraignment monthly plus the retain. So that was the other option.
Right.
City manager.
I think what we, uh, one of the conversations that we had was in having this be a temporary ordinance. But I think after, you know, our conversation, the council can adjust the ordinance at any time. So you don't have to declare it as temporary now. But we have taken your guidance and I think we've talked to the judge that she is aware that as we go through the budget formulation process, you want to hear, or you want to see clearly the presentation on how this impacts the overall budget and for us to further evaluate if this is the best option. So I think with your approval of the ordinance as presented, we now have the charge to make sure we continue to evaluate moving forward, and we're ready to do that.
And I will amend, I submitted my budget to the city manager and finance team, per their request. Yes, because this significantly, if you approve it this way, it significantly reduces the overall cost for the judges.
All right. You got a motion on the floor?
Wendy Rowell.
Wendy Rowell. Yes, sir?
No, I thought you said.
Okay, all those in favor? All those in favor? Okay, then, you're not voting? All right, it's six to one.
Thank you.
Next?
The next item is a discussion item on the 2018 tax digest memo.
We had the discussion in, in the workshop.
Yes, but I think we have to ask you to bring it forth for a vote.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Who's doing the act?
I can do it, 10.57, all right?
I need, just give me a motion.
I make a motion to accept the city's most recommendations.
Second. Property moved to second in discussion. All those in favor? Savannah?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Next?
The next item is a discussion on council training and special workshop. That's sponsored by council member Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Uh, yes, I was requesting that the council, we have like a five-hour training and development workshop with a refresher course on the Robert's Rules of Orders, Opening Meeting Act, and Open Records Act compliance, and a focused session on municipal economic development, property redevelopment, and revenue enhancement opportunities. Can I, I'd like to move that we have.
Okay.
Five-hour training.
Five-hour training?
Yes.
Right on.
And it would be our, if we could, I can move to the city attorney?
Who's gonna do the training?
The city, the city attorney, if I can let her speak? Venture in Denmark?
Venture Denmark would do the training? That's your motion, the second question.
I wanted her to kind of speak.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we take a second if she can speak in discussion?
Okay.
He needs a second to the motion.
A second.
Property moves to second, discussion, good.
So I'll elaborate a little bit. So what I, what we will do is, and this would be within the current compensation rate, so there'd be no additional charge, but I would bring in my economic development team. They are the team who has assisted Kateville, College Park, just the other cities that we represent in doing major and substantial economic development projects. It would also include a discussion on revenue enhancement opportunities as well as property acquisition and redevelopment opportunities. We have, with my law firm, we have a in-house economic specialist. He's probably, in my opinion, one of the best in the state of Georgia at maximizing municipal revenues. He was instrumental with College Parks, airport facility, alcohol taxation collection, et cetera. So I'd like to bring him to the table. I also have an associate who works at my firm who deals primarily with bonds, municipal bonds, with revenue-type projects or development authority. So I would like to bring these people, have them a brief view on development authorities, the downtown development authority, business and industrial development authorities, just to give you a precursor on how those entities operate. And to also just talk about these items. As well as, I think it would benefit, you can never have too much training in Open Meetings Act, Open Records Act, and Robert Tools compliance and refresher. So if we have the opportunity, we'd like to give you brief materials on those and just break refreshments while we have you ready.
Uh, this is Mr. Manager's question. There's been a lot of talk about a lot of stuff we're doing. And you can, if you talk with her and kind of towards that training.
So we haven't.
There's a lot of stuff going on, everybody's.
So we haven't spoken about, we have not had a chance to speak on this activity just yet. I would say that there are a couple of economic development activities that administrative staff is also bringing together. So it's probably a great opportunity for us to combine them. I think we, uh, there's another firm also interested in speaking to the council and presenting specifically on TADS. I also believe that through the budget process, you'll see some staff recommendations around economic development. So I think that it would probably behoove us all to coordinate these activities together. I don't know how the council would like to do it, but the more information, the better.
I'm telling you, I would like to see it coordinated, because we're just all over the place, you know? And if she's got something, we've got something, it's simple, you can put it together. And by the same time, maybe bringing GMA and Carl Benson, whoever, ARC, whoever we need to go, coordinate everything and then go from there. So I would like to see us take some time to do that.
Also, maybe one recommendation might be to separate the Robert's Rules of Order and the Open Meetings Act, and then we coordinate a combined work session of interested parties, or combined training session of interested parties strictly focused on economic development. If, again, if that's your appetite more than, you know.
You know, I know everybody's tired of me, and what I'm saying, you know what I'm gonna say, don't you? What am I gonna say?
Strategic plan.
Exactly, you know I have a plan.
I think, but I would say, I think this is an opportunity to combine those efforts. Like, you don't have a strategic plan, you start the strategic planning process on July the 16th. And with that, economic development is a lot of people's focus. I would recommend maybe pulling that out and combining those efforts. I'd also say we, we probably do need some strong training on.
Yes, we do.
Open records and Robert's Rules of Order. So my recommendation might be to just slightly amend it to separate the two. And we coordinate on the economic development. And I think our attorney's firm is absolutely prepared and organized and equipped to get us ready for Robert's Rules of Order and Open Records. And so whatever the council, again, decides to do, we support.
So that was one of my questions for five hours, I was gonna ask, can we break it up? And two, is there going to be additional costs for your services to provide this training?
No, that would be included within the current rate. Well, actually, we, we adjusted that. The only extra cost that I anticipate is that I plan to buy all council members' most recent version of the 11th edition of Robert's Rules of Order, just to make sure that you have the most updated copy. I know a couple of council members have older versions. And what I do is I normally expense that, those costs, those type costs to finance.
Okay, how do you all design it?
Well, I mean, I, I think if there's any material that needs to be ordered for Robert's Rules of Order, I think that maybe you need to coordinate that with our clerk because he has attended the training and he may be able to, um, uh, provide the training and material at a cheaper rate. I definitely prefer to have a coordinated effort from some of the experts as your purpose to economic development. Five hours is not gonna be enough to cover Robert's Rules of Order and economic development. And I would prefer to get that training from an economic developer or someone who specializes in the air versus our legal, um, versus our legal team. And Carmenita asked, answered the question. I just wanted to make sure this training was inclusive of the $500,000 K that we plan in our legal, um, our law firm.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
Um, I do think that Venture in Denmark is more than qualified to do the Robert's Rules of Order and everything that's listed. And I don't think no one ever questioned the cost of 500,000 we were paying the other legal firm.
Well, I did.
Well, the other legal firm?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We don't have to bring in anybody else up in there, we're talking about one thing.
And that's what I'm talking about.
We got one law firm.
Exactly.
All right, well, let's stay there.
Let's stay there.
Is there any other discussion?
No, I'm fine, I'm, I'm ready to take a vote.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'm going to have Venture Denmark do five hours.
Uh, I have a previous question.
She called a previous question, second?
Second.
All right. We got, we got, we got a motion on the floor to call the previous question. Property moved to second, and then discussion on the previous question. Hearing none? Hearing none, let's vote on the previous question. That passes. Will you restate the previous question?
Okay, I'll have to defer to Councilwoman Jackson. The motion was made by Councilwoman Jackson and seconded by. The motion was made by Councilwoman Jackson and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Baker as well as Ms. Gumps. And I, I could tell that Ms. Jackson probably added in front of her. Do you want to list all those items again?
Uh, I said a five-hour training, I think we have convinced that, uh, I'm just gonna still leave it at five hours if it's, if it's less than then, that's what we do. But a five-hour training and development workshop, uh, with refresher on Robert's Rules, Opening Meeting Act and Opening Records Act, um, compliance and a focus session on municipal, well, we said no municipal economic development. Is that what we agreed to or no? So we're just gonna leave it as it is? Okay, uh, session on municipal economic development, property redevelopment and revenue enhancement opportunities.
No collaboration? And collaboration?
That's what I was saying, didn't we, didn't we change that? You just said no.
Can I add something? Excuse me, let me get the question. So your motion is to refer to collaboration between what Mr. Donald may have and what?
The economic development and Venture in Denmark.
Okay. I guess that's collaboration.
Yeah. Collaboration.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, missy. Okay. We still in discussion? As well? No, he restated motion, okay. Okay, you restated the motion, can I get it exactly? We have it, we're probably, so now we in discussion, what, what did you want to say?
Mr. Mayor, did you, are we motion, are we voting to have, uh, the legal firms provide trainings just on Robert's Rules of Order?
No, the, the attorney said no.
No, Councilwoman Willis, the training would include, um, the economic development piece. The training would include from my firm, the economic development component, Robert's Rules, Open Meeting, Open Records. And then I would also collaborate with the city manager to bring on board any other economic development, um, opportunities that he received initially at the training.
I thought that we agreed that the economic development piece, you were supposed to coordinate that with our city manager who had other efforts on the way to train us in economic development. And then you were just supposed to focus on Robert's Rules of Order. And I suggested that you, uh, coordinate with our clerk to get the material needed for Robert's Rules of Order.
She stated, she stated what the position is. Uh, it's been voted on, it's been moved and seconded.
Okay, well, I hope this is my management's, I won't be in session.
Alright, well, we've affected it to vote. Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor? Savannah, what y'all saying?
No. Yes.
No and yes, okay. So we, Mr. Lee is not here. So, uh, we have six yeas, I mean, five yeas and one yeas. Alright. Mr. Clerk?
Your next item is under number nine, City Manager's Report, a must-look report to elected officials, May 28th. How long Mr. City Manager?
Well, I would say that, uh, most of the information that is in the City Manager's Report, uh, again, has been provided and I think council has had an opportunity to review it. Uh, just a couple of quick highlights that I wanted to pull out of the report. Uh, parks transition, again, underway, the, uh, staff portion has been completed. Uh, but there are a couple of things that we're still focused on. One, uh, is the master plan development. And so a July recommendation will be made on the parks master plan. Wanted to make sure to, you know, inform you that we're moving forward on that. Uh, the, also, we still have two key items related to transition. One is land acquisition, which we are continuing to move forward and having some, uh, intense conversations with Fulton County. Uh, in addition to that, there are some facility repairs that the county has agreed to through transition. And so we won't consider transition closed until they complete those repairs. Uh, additionally, just highlighting from public safety, one area that I think you guys would be just as excited as we are is that we are, we have hired and extended offers to six new police officers and we will be celebrating their swearing-in very soon. Inviting and letting council know about that process. Uh, third, we have the second, uh, mayor's walk, uh, taking place tomorrow, the 27th, uh, with the starting location, uh, at the LA Fitness Plaza off of Vauxhall National. And so it will be that corridor. Uh, I think one area, we had a technical, uh, difficulty in posting the report from the first one and we actually didn't realize it until today. So we'll have that report out of the issues that we identified posted at some point tomorrow. And then within that 30-day timeframe, uh, the solutions to what we've done to solve those from the Cascade Corridor. Uh, and then I think the fourth piece, we've already talked about, the budget open house. Uh, I believe, again, we had a, a snap forward with transitioning to the more permanent, uh, website. But, uh, I believe that the, uh, advertisements for not only the budget open house, but other activities are now on the website. If not, we hope to have that completed by tomorrow. So that concludes, I think there's a written report, but...
Oh, yeah, my thing, as long as we've got five new police cars.
Five new police cars, absolutely. I know, now, we mentioned those at the last meeting, but excited about that as well.
Okay, uh, city attorney, you got a word for it?
Uh, is it, I think it's the Walmart Plaza, I apologize, I said that wrong. And I said, I think it's the Walmart Plaza, that I, I think I said... Sorry, I went there this morning.
What time, what time it started?
I think it's one o'clock.
One o'clock.
Um, I was very impressed with the residential permits, over 400 residential permits and even a lot of commercial. And I really wonder if you can break it down into, you know, some smaller data sets, like where they are, what type they are. Are they developers or are they just residents who build fences or repairing homes or, or whatever? That would really be helpful.
I think we could potentially do that, I think we would have to do it on a quarterly basis versus monthly.
Okay.
So don't let it commit to that now, we find out in the next, uh, reporting session. I'll make sure to let you know or if it is able to be done monthly, we'll just include it in the report.
And, and then I saw something about the comp plan and our city boundaries being finalized. And we can't finalize our boundaries until the last cases and the annexation issues are resolved. So, you know, there's nothing we can do about that right now. Unless we'll be doing it over and over and over again, you know what I mean? That's, that's gonna come to a head soon. That's it.
One last comment, Ms. Willis, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, thank you for the recording. Is there any way that, um, on any of City Manager's reports that we could have a concurrent or you, you have monthly report, a monthly, um, update on head count who's hired and, and the name and title of the employee? Um, I know that you were expeditionally trying to fill roles, but as we, and I know it's impossible for us to know 500 employees, but as you bring people on and hire people, um, you know, I would like to, um, know, uh, who those individuals are on a monthly basis. I know you can't let us know every time you hire somebody, but at least a monthly update of who's hired, um, the title and who the person is. Um, so that we can make sure that we keep our, uh, constituents updated on that information.
Yes, ma'am, so remember that, remember that on a monthly basis, you get the report that's based off of your priorities. The interim meeting after that is where you get that information. So the short answer is yes, and it's actually done once a month, but just not a part of this report because this report looks backwards. So this, yeah, so this report that you're getting in June looks at May. You get those real-time snapshots at the meeting in between.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, Mayor, um, you asked for if the attorney had a report. We made a motion, um, Attorney Walker, for you to provide us a listing of all legislation and ordinances that you had in your queue with the date that we requested it, the anticipated time they were supposed to be completed and who the other other ordinance, uh, is, uh, or the legislation is. And we have yet to receive that information. I would like to have a time that you will provide that information to us.
Okay, well, I think it should be...
Yeah, real quick, Mayor, so I think this is one example, we've been working administratively and legally together. The city attorney and I, we actually connected today. In addition to just your request there, we're looking at including some of the staff responsibility or request as well, so that you get a comprehensive view of all of the requested activities from legal. And so, um, I'll definitely turn it over to the city attorney, but one of those, the response is kind of holistically. She also has a report on the GMPR.
Okay, uh, last comment, Mr. Lee.
Can you tell me, or perhaps our judge can tell me, um, what month are we writing tickets for now? Like, what, how far ahead have we started calendaring, calendaring court dates?
We're currently getting tickets for September, um, so officers are now writing into September.
Hey, um, I, I just have one more question for our, uh, city attorney. When we approved, uh, this city council meeting schedule, uh, the back page of that had a holiday calendar? Did we approve a holiday calendar or did we just approve the council meeting schedule?
I do not recall.
No, that is just a holiday calendar for your reference. I think HR will bring, uh, or the city manager will bring a holiday calendar for the city.
Do you know when that can be coming?
Normally they do that by calendar year, not our fiscal year, so it's probably the latter part of this year.
That's correct.
Thank you. Alright. City Attorney?
Yeah, so Councilwoman Willis, um, we do have a presentation, a legal review and summary plan for next meeting. Um, I plan to bring the, um, staff from my law firm. I know a lot of city departments and members of my firm, um, for example, since February, I've had attorneys going to, um, several of the committees of the city, the Planning Commission, to the Board of Zoning Appeals, um, to code enforcement. So I'd like to bring those members, um, just introduce them, um, briefly and to let you know what items they were working on. I do also plan to update the council on the items, um, just give you a legal summary of the last quarter as well as let you know which items are in queue. Um, we get about, probably about four requests, maybe every three days. So we do have a substantial number of items and I've collaborated with the city manager to give priority to these items and to get them for you. We do plan to present to the council for, um, your consideration, just a proposed priority schedule and you can modify that as we see accordingly. And that will be available at your next meeting. As far as, um, the city...
Hold on, let her finish. Go ahead.
Okay.
As far as the city attorney's report, um, I do want to update the council on the Coward Lakes Venture issue that, uh, we've been collaborating with the county with. And when I say we, I'm referring to me, the city manager, the finance department and other city staff. So just to kind of give you a background of where we stand with this, the Fulton County has a tree ordinance that it adopted in 2000 and amended in 2003. And what this tree ordinance does, it requires that anyone who submits a land disturbance permit is required to also submit a tree protection plan. And that plan has to adhere to the requirements that were set by Fulton County. And these requirements are spatially, the number of trees that you can have per district, the number of trees that you can remove, the number of trees that you have to leave, fines if you don't comply with, with the provisions of the ordinance. So the question becomes, is the city going to adopt the tree ordinance?
Yes.
And my recommendation would be, um, it's, it's a, not only does it protect the environment and the community, but it's also a source of revenue. The developers, on average, for large, large-scale development could owe the city upwards of $100,000 to $200,000. So I definitely recommend utilizing the county's ordinance and tool we were able to make up ordinance that's specific to South Fulton. So the second question, and we will present this to you for your consideration, um, I'm gonna give you a memo on this information as well. But the second issue, the first issue is, is the city going to, um, adopt its own tree ordinance after transition? And the second issue is, we have a developer. They are called Coward Lakes Ventures and they are in collaboration with Legacy of Walton Lakes. And these developers entered into a development agreement with Fulton County, um, several years ago. And as part of that agreement, the developers would create a 55, approximately 55-acre green space and five-foot-wide walking and biking trail. They would construct the trail, they would, uh, complete it. My understanding, based on what I've been told by the county, is that that trail is completed. In exchange for that trail, the monies that would have been due to Fulton County under its tree ordinance would have, would be deemed to be satisfied by the construction of that trail. And the county would have certain obligations. And those obligations of the county would be to, one, repair, maintain and oversee the trail. And then, two, the county's obligation would be to have insurance put on the trail for bodily injury, for property damage, et cetera. So the question that's before the city council is, to what extent are you going to assume those responsibilities of the county? I spoke with the city manager again today, um, after my most recent conversation with the county office yesterday. And we do plan to collaborate with you together before your next meeting and to give you a proposal of what we think legally and administratively may be in the city's best interest. And then at that time, you can tell us the direction that you'd like to move.
One is, as I recollect, uh, as developers, big business in the county, they were mandated to put sidewalks in front of that business. Some of you call them sidewalks to nowhere. Uh, and they, and the whole premise was that once they did that, they kind of would come back years later and kind of fill in the blanks, okay? That particular development was on Camp Creek Parkway. We didn't see the need to put sidewalks on Camp Creek Parkway unless you want to get killed, alright? So as a agreement, you would take the money that they would use to build the sidewalks and build the trail. That's what the agreement was, I don't know about this other stuff. But that's what they were supposed to do. So they built the trail for about, um, almost a mile long, alright? So you tell me about this green space stuff and they did this, that's what I recollect when we first did. So I just want to make you aware of that as you go through your negotiations, as you go through your negotiations with them. Uh, the other thing is, where, where are we on, uh, the shooting range? Where are we now?
The Tomlo?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have, um, I have been in collaboration with the county. And one of the holdups, um, and this was early June, is that the county gave me a PDF copy of the contract, which if you give me a PDF, um, I can't review it. Because I've never had a contract that I didn't change. So I contacted the county and I, I asked them to give me a Word copy. They provided me the Word copy and, uh, made substantial revisions. And on June the 6th, um, I forwarded that copy back to city staff and back to the county and told them to hear your advice and, and we had not heard back from the county to this point.
Let me enlighten you on something else. Several months ago, early part of the city, we had a meeting which included all the Fulton County staff and their attorneys. And at that meeting, I proposed the question, is... Is, I thought that was God, so... You said it sounded like me, so it couldn't have been God. Uh, so, so here's, here's the question I proposed. Hang on, I asked the question. Thank you. I asked the question, is the Tomlo shooting range a park? The first answer I got back was, well, Mayor, you know, not really, it's an entertainment type. It ain't no entertainment, all right? And I asked, proposed the question again, and I have witnesses with me who were there. I asked the question again from the county attorney... I asked the question again, from the county attorney down to the county manager. They said, it is a park, and they were going to put it on the list of parks that we have. Now, they're coming back with some more mess. Now it ain't a park no more. It was a park three months ago, and you treat it as a park, you treat it as a park for as long as I was commissioner.
It was on our parks tour.
It was on our parks tour. I'm not getting it, really not getting it. So they openly admitted to me that it was a park. And it was another tur- David Duke, David, or David. I thought they were...
Couple words?
No, just from Robert, put it there, David, Dove. David Dove was in that meeting with me, and he can testify to the fact that that's what was the...
So I think currently the county is leveraging the fact that there is a, uh, landfill, uh, as the reason for which they cannot transition it. I think what we have confirmed is that the park and the parking lot do not sit on a landfill, and the city will gladly not accept the landfill.
Absolutely.
And we just want the park. And so I think our attorney is preparing a response for them now. They just had recent contact, and we'll address it that way.
I mean, well, I just want to know what they say in front of lots. So as you talk to these guys, you know, that was the conversation they had.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, I don't know whose first question, go ahead. Uh, let's go on.
So, um, the city attorney and city manager, for the walking trail, um, that is, of course, in District Two, have Fulton County said that they've been maintaining it? Because to me, it appears that they have not been maintaining that trail.
Now, I've... I asked the, the private parties who were involved, is the trail being maintained? And the response that I got back made me come to the personal conclusion that it is not being maintained. However, I did ask the county, was everything completed and constructed? And they did, and, um, the representative that I spoke to said yes. So I think it would probably be prudent of us to send one of our own, um, personnel out there to just make an assessment and see what the actual condition of that property is.
Okay, and then there, once you all make the assessment, are we going to go back into, I guess, some type of agreement, because they have not made, I'm gonna tell you, they have, they did. I know I'm not, you know, legal, but what else can we do as far as to that?
There's, you have several options, and those are the ones that I plan to discuss with the city manager. One option can be that you'll give, that you will, um, accept the tree credits, but then you won't accept responsibility of the trail, because this is something that the county has contracted to assume responsibility for. Just keep in mind that if you don't take responsibility of the trail, then the county wouldn't be able to retain those easements over the property. So that's one option. Option two can be, we're just not going to, um, accept the credits, period, which would, the city did get a benefit, they did get this, this trail that it's created, so that, um, that's, that's your discretion, and we want to take that approach. So you have several options that are out there. Um, it's just a matter, I just, you know, was, was hoping to sit down with the city manager and see administratively, because obviously, if you take over the tree ordinance, you have to have the appropriate staff, you have to have a city arborist, someone who can help facilitate, uh, the requirements of this ordinance. So I'm hoping to sit down with him before the next meeting, and he's already told me today that, that, you know, let's throw schedules to have that discussion, so.
Okay.
Back to the trees. So when we thought that our comp plan had not been approved, we were using the, the county's ordinances and comp plan, and the tree ordinance was a part of that. So all during this time, up to, you know, when we found out that it really, that we had really agreed and passed it, every, um, development that came through should have been subject to a tree ordinance, and when we met with the arborist, he was definitely doing it up until the time he left, and he left in, uh, the end of March. And so I know that we don't have one now, but as the developments are coming through, I hope that there is someone that is dealing with the trees. That's number one. And after we found out, which, was it last month? I think that we found out that the plan had actually been approved in April. So it really doesn't matter, because the tree ordinance should be being adhered to by the planning department now, to make sure that the developers are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and there is a, um, development or where stuff that really looks like they are just clear cut, so, you know, I, I don't know what's going on, but I, I think that we need to take the part together.
Oh, that's my good. I'm sorry.
I just want somebody to say that you did.
I think I wanted to answer.
I'm, I'm, I want somebody to say you were able to look at it, to deal with it, or something.
I heard the statement, I didn't necessarily capture the question. I, so is there, while we don't have an arborist, you know, we're recruiting and we're filling it, but it's just like when there's an absence of any staff member, the department still provides the service. While we have an ordinance, we don't have a program, per se. And so I think we haven't taken on all of the existing, uh, uh, I guess, tree programs under Fulton County as of yet. That's what the, uh, city attorney was saying. So this Coward Lakes, while it is under our authority now, it was created under Fulton County, and so we would have to transition that over to us, if, if, if I understand what you're saying correctly. What, what are you, what are you asking? I'm confused.
That tree ordinance has been in existence all this time.
I understand that.
Any development that comes through has to abide by the tree ordinance. It's a part of what occurs with development, but I was sort of hearing, like, this is something that we need to adopt, when we've already adopted all the ordinance.
Well, you, you have, but I believe that only goes through the transition period. So you all...
The transition period is only in that program.
Correct. And so what, I think what we're saying is, we have to create a tree ordinance and program for the city of South Fulton, long-term, because as you take on these, uh, these programs or whatnot, they do not expire when the ordinance expires.
You're making a good point. And the point you're making is, in November...
That's correct.
In November, we will have to adopt all ordinances. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
And this one is one that we're looking at, making sure we adopt it appropriately, so that we get the benefit and the liability.
I got it.
Okay. So, so that, that leads me to an additional question. So since, since, um, we don't have an ordinance...
Today.
And so, today, and so who is enforcing our ordinance right now? How is that enforced?
I guess the way I look at it is, I'm sorry, the way I look at it is, the book starts with the community development director, and she directs and assigns that additional work for her staff. And so those activities are being enforced. I don't know the staff person's name, and I don't normally call out non-management staff in public in that manner, but yes, we are still administering the program.
So, I mean, I guess, who, who would be, we're administering it in theory, but like, who's driving around to make sure that the developers are not...
So there, what's the staff title? Don't give the name, but the, so the engineer is coordinating that activity?
Um, then a, a, around the, more so the gun range, but, but also, I mean, what, there are a limited, I guess it's actually for the car, the city attorney. Am I, am I wrong in my understanding that there are only a limited number of uses that a county can operate or, or control land inside city limits? And so I'm, I'm just wondering, like, yeah, it is.
Well, the county has more flexibility when it owns the actual land, and I'm not sure if, if the city manager, are you aware of who owns that landfill? Is it county-owned? Or are they subleasing that area?
Well, I don't believe they're subleasing it. I, I know it's in the, it's in those...
It is county-owned.
Yeah.
I guess, I, so I guess my question is...
Go ahead. I think what he's getting at is that when counties have built facilities inside of a city, where the city is, when the city is over ten thousand in population, that there are only about four things that the county can have inside of that city. And, and, and the basic example, Duncan Park in Fairland. We, 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 we controlled Duncan Park until they annexed it in, they grew over ten thousand. So they had to pay us two and a half million dollars for Duncan Park, so that's the question he's asking. I think it's a very relevant, legitimate question, uh, because there are certain, 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 some things you can't do inside of a state over ten thousand.
And even if they own the land, are they forced to sell it?
Well, here's, I think to help answer your concerns on that, I think it would probably be prudent on staff to take an inventory...
Sure.
Of what is county-owned, and then we can do a case-by-case assessment as to whether that use can continue, and if there's restrictions on that use.
Well, but, so I think in this instance, I, I think in this instance, we, we have to look at the fundamental argument that the county has and prove it wrong. And so I think we believe, and they have said that it is a park, and it has been a park until today.
Right.
But I think what the county is saying is that this is a landfill that we happen to have an additional use of, and so I think our argument is, is you can call it whatever you want, and the rest of that land, we don't care about. But this is a park, and it is not a part of a landfill. And then, once we prove that, we take the park.
And I think he was asking us a broad question, that he'd be out there, that we need, I'm gonna tell you, if you clean that, 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 uh, that walk, that path up, that path was named after William Bill, that wasn't even nowhere in the woods, you look like that. So I would appreciate it, to be able to get my name out, all right? We have a, oh, no, one other question I got, I was passed to me, Mr. Donald.
Okay.
Uh, City Grove Park, Capeland, huh, Sixty? City Grove Park Plan. You know, City Grove, the park out there on City Grove Road, that, uh, we probably need to go out and visit and see, as we, as we're talking about FY nineteen, to see how we can do something. We put a brand new fire station out there, and, uh, we really, it's a very nice park. I mean, it has a lot of potential, you know? So a lot of, a lot of people live out there too, so we just need to add that to the list, all right? Uh, we moved, uh, the NORAD security agreement. Can we take up that issue now?
Yes, sir. That's a request approval of the NORAD security agreement.
I entertain a motion to...
I just, I make a motion to approve the NORAD and the Social Security Agreement.
Sir? Property move, select a discussion.
Discussion.
Okay. Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. Ms. Robb, Ms. Jackson has the call.
Okay, I wanted it moved because, uh, in number two was that hours and location of service for the security officers. Burdette Park was omitted. Was there a reason?
I believe it, I believe at the time that...
No, Mike.
I believe at the time of submittal, there were not services or original submittal or quote, there were no services being provided there, or there had not been a guard there. I think it was just a simple oversight, and so your request to add it to the list is not an issue at all, so we can do that.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Robb?
I have a question relative to the, um, contract amount, because I didn't see that anywhere. I saw a raise of compensation based on, you know, the first page of that agreement, but I don't see the dollar value.
So, Mr., you guys corrected me a phone, but I believe that it is based on, that's a contract that we had to ride from Fulton County, and it's a temporary contract, and so it's based on the hourly rate, not the, not a total amount, right?
Yeah, Mr. Manager, that's correct. It's based on our operational needs, and they are seasonal. We are busy at certain times of the year currently, during spring and summer, and we are slower at other times of the year, fall to winter. And so we utilize them based on where they're needed, and so it's an hourly rate as opposed to a total contract amount.
So answer the, what is the hour?
And it's also covered across the city, so I think parks has the most immediate needs, but it allows us to coordinate, as you see at the front desk at City Hall and some of those other areas. So the blanket allows us to coordinate the rate, and then each department's budget and expenditures are managed by the controller and the CFO's office.
So how much is, so given that and our understanding, how much, for example, is earmarking the budget, um, for parks, that supplemental service for the current, for the remainder this year, I guess?
I believe, I know that the total amount is under two hundred and fifty thousand for the balance of the year, but their overall budget, I believe, was at around five hundred and forty thousand for those security services and whereabouts for park patrol?
Mr. Manager, I believe that is inclusive, so those are the services that you mentioned as well at City Hall, as well at the location.
Okay.
We had just run around three hundred thousand dollars in here in parks for the last two years.
I, I'm not a... Yeah, I, I have, I've just never seen, and I understand the rates and, you know, it's based on that, but I, I don't know, I, I just don't like a contract that doesn't have a, you know, an amount on it, or, I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, I, so I think we can add an arbitrary dollar amount, but I will tell you, we can't exceed the budget, and so that is the cap, and so we can get that number from the, uh, CFO, and you could approve it today based within budget, and then we fill in the number in the contract, if that was to make you more comfortable.
Yeah, that would be my preference.
Okay.
We can do that. Does she need to make a motion to add?
She does, too. You need to amend your motion to include Burdette Park.
So it would include Burdette Park, and then it would be not to exceed the allocated budget for security services.
Exactly right. So you need to amend your motion to include Burdette Park.
Okay, I need one.
And the not to exceed budget.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to adopt both Burdette Park and to the NORAD, and not to exceed the allocated budget amount they specified.
Okay with you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
The property move, the second, is, is, is for a discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Savannah?
Aye.
All right, so that, I think that's a, I think that's unanimous. All right? Thank you so much. Uh, we'll go into, Mr. Burke.
Okay. You're now, as the mayor of City Council, comment.
Two minutes of feet, like, I started this way last time, though.
Yeah.
We'll come down if you need to.
Uh, so, so the next few weeks are going to be all about economic development, and on National Security, we have Mayor's Walk, um, South Fulton, Thursday will be celebrating the grand opening of its first hotel, it's going to be one of three. Uh, and then Saturday, we are going to have a Budget Town Hall at, um, nine AM at Burdette Park. And so we're just going to, just be taking a, a overview of the budget. Then, of course, on July fourteenth, we will be having our whole National Economic Development Summit. It will be at Ponte Park Baptist Church. You can visit calicare.com or see me afterwards to get more information. One of the things that we will be doing is talking about our congressional plan, our twenty-year vision for Old National, as well as hearing from college, the city of College Park, their plans for Old National and two eighty-five. Uh, they will be available, those plans, they have made big plans for that in the Old National, so we should be doing the same for ours. Again, you can, uh, see me afterwards to sign up for the newsletter, and South Fulton for us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lee.
Well, everyone, tomorrow night, we are having, uh, HOA meeting. This is the second group of HOAs that, uh, we will meet with, and, uh, hopefully in August, we will bring all of them together so that we can all share in the same glory or pain or whatever it is, but the intent is to really help them out. Um, so I'm really, really looking forward to that. Um, it's going to be held at one of the schools in District Four, and next month...
And next month, we're gonna partner, uh, with a back-to-school campaign. And it's gonna be at Duncan Park. And in August, we're gonna partner with another group with a back-to-school campaign, which will either be at Langston Hughes or Renaissance Middle School. And, and in, um, September, we're partnering with another group that's going to do a Taste of South Fulton. And that's at Wilkersonville Park. Uh, and I'm really, really excited about that. And we are working with, uh, some artists because we want to, uh, develop an art program as well, so. That's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all, um, for everything that we did last week. I think last week was crazy. We had, um, probably events happening in District Two every day. Um, so thank you all for coming out to the Financial Literacy Workshop that was held at Clifton Dell. We also had our, um, Town Hall meeting and Economic Development Forum that was hosted by William Roney, also at Will Creek Library. Um, we had so much going on last week, so I do thank you all for coming out. Uh, we will have a back-to-school, um, January on July twenty-eighth, and that will be at Sandtown Park. That will be, uh, hosted by myself and Councilwoman, uh, Brown. And that's a big, big event, and we want to make sure that you all come out to that. Um, and also too, um, we have the Wakanda in the Park that is happening on July the twentieth. Um, that's in conjunction with the other councilwoman in District One and District, uh, Three. So we do encourage you all to come out to that as well. Um, you can find out more information about what's happening in, in District Two and all over the city. Follow me on Facebook, or you can text D two news to two two K two B.
Councilwoman Rob?
Uh, very quickly, um, I think people have covered it. Also had a great, um, Town Hall meeting, uh, with the tax assessment. We had about a hundred and fifty people who came out to Vine Hill. We, um, appreciated it as well as coffee with Interim Chief Rogers, you know, another very successful event that we did at Decision Point last week. And, um, just wanted to let our constituents know, the reason we are not with you this evening is because we're at a zoning, we've been at a zoning class all day at Savannah, off of GMA. Um, was very honored to, uh, receive on this past Sunday, the first level of recognition for professional development from that official, so. And that concludes my report.
Alright. Congratulations to you. Uh, Ms. Willis?
Yes? This is, I hear somebody. Okay, I hear it. Okay, this is Councilwoman Willis. Um, well, Councilwoman Rob told you why we're not there. Uh, I've been in training in Savannah for the past five days and, uh, City Economic Development Workshop, I mean, excuse me, the zoning and planning workshop, uh, homelessness, uh, municipal service workshop. Uh, also, I took a, um, policy workshop, and then I am looking forward to applying everything I learned, um, to the city. I also, uh, got elected to be the District Three Representative for the Municipal Black Caucus, um, while I was here, so I will be serving in that capacity. Um, we, I will be co-hosting a workshop with Commissioner Arrington tomorrow at Walk Mall Park on June twenty-seventh, uh, from six PM to eight PM. So please bring your photos of your property, uh, recent appraisals or compared to sales, and your current property tax assessment. If you wish to file an appeal, uh, the deadline is July sixth. And so we are encouraging you to come out and file an appeal. This year, I am doing a more targeted, um, back-to-school, uh, celebration. I am partnering with Camp Creek Middle School or Seaborn Lee. Uh, we are going back into Hickory Park, um, to assist, uh, the, the residents who live in that community. We're going to provide new school supplies. And, uh, I'm asking if you have any donations, school supplies, school bags you would like to, uh, give to this community, please bring them to, uh, Camp Creek Middle School or Seaborn Lee. Um, and we are planning to go into that community on August second, um, so that we can make sure they are ready and prepared to, uh, to, uh, go back to school. The kids that live in that community, they be in Seaborn Lee. Seaborn Lee, Camp Creek Middle School, and Westlake High. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I would like to thank everyone, um, who attended, uh, Evening with the Councilwoman on last Friday night. We had, uh, mostly adults who expressed their desire to continue and eating activity at least monthly. And my hats off to Mr. Tony Phillips and his staff for going over and beyond the call of duty to make us as comfortable as possible. And again, thanks to the city manager for coordinating, the department heads for, um, taking it to the streets on Saturday. Thanks to our police, our fire, our code enforcement, Parks and Recreation, Fulton County Housing, World Changers, and Bagley Counseling. They all came out with me on Saturday morning from nine until twelve, and we actually went into three lakes and two lakes. And the residents were very receptive, and they were happy to know of the services that we offered in the city of South Fulton. I mean, they were just eager and just overwhelmed. Uh, and last night, thanks to the Fulton County assessors for coming out, uh, in the storm at Burdette Park. They beat me there. I think I was waiting on the lightning to stop, but they was already in there talking to the people when I got there. But I appreciate them for their time and their energy. They filed, uh, individuals came out, filed their appeals. And, um, thank you guys for coming out tonight.
Who wanted to be known, Mr. Baker?
Mr. Baker? Mr. Baker?
Yes. Uh, I was looking to answer what you was asking. Uh, but, uh, yes, it's been a long week. Last week for me as well, I did attend the GMA Conference in Savannah. I had to ask for the Council Rose and responsibilities, uh, that was, uh, very wanted. And, uh, I also had a time, returned to Oakley's industrial, I mean, Oakley Township Community Meeting, as well as, uh, I would like to thank Cal Con Tooks for, uh, representing our police department there, as well as our fire department that was there on Saturday, uh, providing information of families and, uh, everyone in the community. Also, I have a B U camp that actually ends, uh, this is our second week. Our last day is Friday. Uh, we already fed the homeless, uh, engineer, robotics classes, television, acting, and, uh, et cetera. It's been going on. If, uh, you have someone that's interested these last couple of days, please give me an email, mark.baker@cityofsouthfulton.g. Also, uh, as Colleen stated, we have our first, uh, hotel groundbreaking, or actually ribbon-cutting ceremony on Thursday. I believe it starts at five o'clock, um, Sephiroth Inn, Marriott Philfield Inn. And I also wanted to let you guys know that I will be hosting, along with the DA's office, right here on July twelve, a game, a, a community meeting in reference to game prevention, right at July twelve from six to eight PM. So please come out. If you have young people, uh, come to your party, please bring them out. It'll be a great event, uh, uh, on July twelve. And July twenty-eighth, Walk Mall Park, uh, along with Marvin Arrington, and, um, we will have a celebrity basketball game from one to four. Not really in competition with your organization, but we just have a lot of good things going on in South Fulton from one to four. We're also gonna be doing health screenings, uh, at this event as well. So please email me if you're interested in anything I say, unless everything I forgot. Mark.baker@cityofsouthfulton.g. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I'd like to applaud all my colleagues up here, uh, for doing the things they do in their community, in their district, getting the word out. And wherever I get in, I've been in, I've been to the galleries. I've been to the lead at the economic development field, and I appreciate that. We do a great job of letting people understand. Uh, sometimes I hope we can do more collaboratively, but we're getting there. Uh, also wanted to, to just applaud Judge Sellers. She was elected District Representative by the Georgia's Council of Municipal Judges. So, so that's wonderful. We will be having our mayor's walk on tomorrow. Uh, I don't care what the temperature is. For old men like me to walk, everybody need to walk. And so we're gonna, one thing about the mayor's walk is very informative. All of us, just not my, all of us come. That's what we had. We had about five out of seven of us that was really doing the walk. And we'll probably, hopefully have that, uh, on tomorrow, as we walk into, uh, Councilman, Councilman Colleen's area, uh, and, and on All-National Highway. And just, you know, if you're, if you're a business owner, and you just wake up, you get up in the morning, the mayor's walking through your door with the, with the city manager, the police, the fire, all of the other council people, I mean, that becomes very impressive to people. And you get an opportunity to, to say some things you would not have said before. So if you all wanna come, one o'clock tomorrow, get your sun hat, whatever. We got plenty of water. Sun tick, I don't need that. We, no, we walking in. It's sum up, well, you know, All-National, we can't be here all day, Jesse. We'll come back. Okay. But, uh, uh, it's gonna be fun. So please, if you have a little time and come and walk with us tomorrow, please come walk with us, alright? At this time, I'll attempt to have more.
I just like to, uh...
Hold up, what, can you do that? Because I can't let her do it. So I, I take a motion to adjourn. I take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Property move is second. Alright. All those in favor?
Okay, yeah. Real quick, the meeting is over, but I just would like to solicit prayers for Reverend Jacob Massey.